So I'll go ahead and call this, um, meeting of the Gallatin Municipal Regional Planning Commission for March twenty-third to order. And, um, before we go any further into the meeting, I need to make the announcement that this, the Planning Commission meeting is being conducted by teleconference, web streaming, due to the coronavirus COVID-19 emergency per Governor Lee's Executive Order Number sixteen. So, we need to hold a vote by the members of the Planning Commission to approve holding this meeting by teleconference. Um, I'll entertain a, I'll make a motion to hold this meeting by teleconference, um, web streaming. Do I have a second?
Second by Albert.
Okay. We have a second. Uh, any discussion on that? All in favor of doing so indicate by, um, sorry, we need a, I suppose we need a roll call vote on each one of these items since it's teleconference?
Uh, yes. Chair Purrier?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Fennell? Dr. Organe?
Yes.
Mr. Strather?
Yes.
Ms. Hibbler?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, that's a six votes. Uh, Councilmember Fennell is not in the room or on the call.
Okay. Motion approved. We'll move on with the, um, invocation. If you'll bow your heads for a moment. Keep us, good Lord, under the shadow of your mercy in this time of uncertainty and distress. Sustain and support the anxious and fearful, and lift up all who are brought low, that we may rejoice in your comfort, knowing that nothing can separate us from your love in Christ Jesus our Lord. Amen. If you'll join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
Allegiance.
-to the flag-
Flag.
...of the United States of America-
United States of America.
...and to the Republic-
And to the Republic.
...which it stands-
Which it stands.
-one nation-
One nation.
Under God-
Under God.
Indivisible-
Indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Mary Ann, will you please call the roll?
Chair Purrier?
Here.
Vice Chair Harris?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Councilman Fennell? Dr. Organe?
Here.
Mr. Strather?
Here.
Ms. Hibbler?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a form.
Thank you. Uh, does the secretary have minutes to present for approval?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I got minutes stated January thirteenth and January the seven, twenty-seventh, I move to approve. Second.
So that's a second by Dr. Organe?
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? Hearing none, I'll, um, take a vote, all in favor of approval, please indicate by saying, uh, I'm sorry, roll call vote.
Chair Purrier?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Organe?
Yes.
Mr. Strather?
Yes.
Ms. Hibbler?
Yes.
That's a unanimous vote.
Okay. So, motion approved and, uh, minutes are approved. We have, uh, a consent agenda consisting of items one through nine. Um, I'll open a public comment, um, on any items on the consent agenda. I'm not sure how this works, Josh.
Okay. Mr. Chair, this is Bill McCord.
Yes, sir.
Right to the conditions of attention, the agenda items number five, number six, number seven, and number eight. The resolution identifies the incorrect prepare of those plats. Each one of those plats needs to reflect the prepare of the, the plat which is the survey that's the engineering company. We will make that change to the consent item. If, uh, if you want to bring that to your attention, that's the only change on the consent item that I want to bring to your attention. So if you make a motion to, um, change, no, that portion of those resolutions in the consent agenda in your motion, that should be sufficient to take care of that.
Yeah. Josh, I think it's, um, it's really clear to me that I cannot, I can't hear the comments well enough to chair the meeting remotely, and it needs to be turned over to somebody who's present there.
Okay. Uh, in the absence of our Vice Chair, Dr. Organe, as the most recent Vice Chair of the meeting, uh, would you care terribly to run the meeting in person for us?
John?
Yes.
Can you not hear because we're not being on the microphone loud enough, or you can't hear anything? Can you hear me well?
I can hear you well there, but I'm afraid that the, I can't hear the comments clear enough. I really couldn't understand what Bill was saying, and I feel like I'm going to make errors. Um, I'm not sure what he was wanting with the consent agendas, but I'm sure it's clear to everybody in the room.
Correct. In order for you to be a participant in this, whether you're chairing or not, you have to be able to clearly understand and hear what's been said during the meeting. So we need to get people closer to the microphone for understanding and for clarification. That's all you need to ask. It may take a little bit longer, but we need to conduct this as if we were all present.
Okay.
So if you need Bill to clarify or repeat what he just said, he'll be glad to come back to the microphone and speak slowly and clearly, so that you may understand what he's asking.
Okay. Bill, um, and the rest of you, I apologize that I'm not there. Um, I would've been there if I'd realized everybody else was braver than I am, so, um... Bill, would you mind repeating one more time what you want to do with items five, six, seven, and eight of the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the resolutions reflect that the engineering firms representing each of the applicants for those items is the one who prepared the plat. The actual persons that prepared the plat are the surveyors. So we're going to substitute the names of the engineers that are identified on each of those resolutions with the name of the surveyor. Other than that, everything is the same. So we're asking you to include in your motion on the consent agenda to change the resolutions by the name of the surveyor on those items, numbers five, six, seven, and eight.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for the clarification. Josh, do we have any, um, comments coming in from the public?
We have had no comments submitted by the public.
Okay. At this time, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, items one through nine, with the changes that Bill, uh, made correcting the names of, uh, the person responsible for the plat on the documents.
Councilman.
One second.
Who was the motion made by and who was, who seconded it?
Uh, Mr. Wilson made the motion and the-
Harris on the second.
Vice Chair Harris on the second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, a motion by Mr. Wilson and seconded by, uh, Mr. Harris. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Uh, please take a roll call of all in favor of approval of items one through nine on the consent agenda with the changes, um, made by Mr. McCord.
Chair Purrier?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh.
Dr. Organe?
Yes.
Mr. Strather, uh, Ms. Hibbler?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, motion approved. Consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to item-
Hello?
Yes, who's on there?
Uh, Ms. Chair Purrier, Councilmember Fennell has joined the meeting.
Very good.
I can't hear anything. What if we redo this meeting at a different time?
We are-
Hello?
Already underway, Mr. Uh, Councilmember Fennell.
Hello? Hello?
Sean, can you hear me?
Mr. Chair, we can hear you.
Okay.
Mr. Fennell? Councilmember Fennell? Councilmember Fennell?
I, I don't know. This phone says it's been blocked now.
Tell him to drive up here. Uh, let the record state that, uh, Councilmember Fennell is not a member of the meeting. Uh, he cannot hear clearly what's being discussed in the room.
All right. We'll move on to item number ten, which is Resolution Number two zero two zero dash oh four five, um, Weatherford Estates, a Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Who's responsible for handling this item?
That would be me, Mr. Chair. Let me get the screen up. Uh, this item does have a com, this Comprehensive Plan Amendment does have a public comment, period. The applicant is requesting a, uh, change to the Comprehensive Plan-
I need to interrupt just one second. Please, everyone, eat your microphones. The public who are listening to this live stream cannot hear. So we really need to get on the mic, because this is our best friend, so that everyone can hear what is being said. Thank you.
Okay. This is a Comprehensive Plan Amendment to Plan Gallatin, or, I'm sorry, uh, Gallatin on the Move twenty twenty. The applicant is requesting a change from the, uh, rural community character area to the emerging suburban neighborhood character area. We're adjusting some microphones in the room. The, uh, rural community character area is what the entire area along Odom's Bend Road was classified as, from Highway one oh nine through the end of Gallatin's, um, planning region. Uh, included in your packets were the rural community character area description and the proposed character area suburban neighborhood emerging, um, character area description. Staff is recommending against this Comprehensive Plan Amendment if the applicant has not proven, uh, that, this plan is not in, this plan is not consistent with several objectives in the overall Comprehensive Plan as identified on the screen, specifically requiring infrastructure to be in place for growth and limit sewer infrastructure to the city limits, preserve rural character by encouraging development in locations better suited to accommodate urban and suburban growth, and adopting development regulations that preserve rural development patterns. It is also not consistent with the community vision established in Chapter Two, extend utilities to reach developable areas within city boundaries, is not consistent with, uh, prohibit development unless adequate infrastructure is in place or can be provided by the developer, also under Chapter Two Community Vision. Uh, it is also not consistent with the objective in the Chapter Two Community Vision, discouraging development along the Cumberland River and its tributaries, development adjacent to waterways can diminish water quality, as well as recreational opportunities, making it important to maintain undeveloped areas in their natural state, or only permit passive recreation opportunities such as greenways and parks. Staff is recommending against this for the reasons stated, and finds it is not consistent with the current Gallatin on the Move twenty twenty Comprehensive Plan. Gallatin, Plan Gallatin, the Comprehensive Plan, uh, that we're currently working through is not in a place where it can provide any recommendations on, uh, changing any character in this area, for it has not been studied, and we do not have the sufficient public comment in which to establish an opinion on this matter. Commissioners, this is Bill McCord, City Planner. Uh, I want to remind you, if you're inclined to make a motion to support staff's position, that you would want to also adopt the findings of the staff in the staff report for denial, and which Josh just read off my list I've been for you. However, if you're inclined to want to approve this, you need to identify specific reasons why you're approving, uh, this request. So, uh, either way, you need to make, or make a motion to include findings of fact and reasons for the actions you're taking. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a representative for the applicant, either present or on the phone? I don't know whether that, uh, okay.
I am not seeing anyone identifying as the applicant. But I have wireless callers.
Okay. I'll ask, once again, um, if I understand correctly, there is no representative of the applicant present or on the phone? All right. Then I will move it to, uh, I will open a public comment. Is there anyone, uh, asking to be recognized, uh, to speak in a public comment on this matter? Josh, I'll rely on you to tell me.
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair Purrier, there was a, a separate conversation. The applicant has not, uh, stated their case at the work session and will not be present this evening.
Okay. Then, I've opened the public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak? And maybe that's on my screen. Does that tell me if there are, are people wanting to speak?
We have not received any public comment prior to this meeting on this issue. If there are anyone in the room who'd like to speak on this issue?
Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Um, any discussion from the members on this item?
John?
Yes.
This is Sean Fennell. I can hear you now.
Oh. Um-
But I can't hear anything else.
Let me relay that for, let me relay that for just a moment. Josh, um, I can actually hear Sean, and he can hear me. Can y'all hear Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Yes. Um, well, then I would submit that, uh, Councilman Fennell has now joined the meeting? Sean, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I think what you're discussing is Sonny Weatherford's particular piece of property. Am I correct?
It is. But let me, let me stop you there for just a moment, Councilman Fennell. If, if you can hear me, but you can't hear the rest of the meeting, then you can't be, you can't vote on or be part of the meeting. Can you hear the rest of what's going on in the meeting?
No.
Well, I think, if I understood our, our city attorney correctly, is that you have to be able to clearly understand, um, what's being said in the meeting in order to vote or participate. Uh, Ms. Alexander, would you correct me if I'm wrong on that? I'm kind of going between two people here.
Yes, I apologize. This is what I thought was accurate, Staff Attorney for the City. And that is correct. In order to participate in this meeting, you have to be able to hear, um, the discussions, the presentations, and anything that's been said, if you were present. So if you can only hear one party, you're clearly not able to participate in the entire meeting.
Um, Sean, I'm gonna relate to you that she, uh, our city attorney's office has said that you have to be able to see the presentation and hear all the comments that are being made in order to participate. I'm so sorry that, but-
Can I say something to you?
Um, yeah.
Hey, John, can I say something to you?
Yes, let me just explain to the-
Oh, I got a, I got a text, I got a text today from Jeff Hinchell for the mayor's office that the meeting was postponed today, and then I had a conflicting reports. I, I've been told that it wasn't gonna happen today, then I was told it was gonna happen today. You know, and then it was like, stand by, we'll get your phone hooked up. Nobody, I stood by, nobody hooked anything up. Uh, you know, I'm just out in the dark. My thing, me to you, is on Sonny's piece of property. This is just trying to divide this property up for his brother and sister him. He's not wanting to build there. Uh, I, I guess what I've understood from Andy Lee, that this would go to council anyway as far as a rezoning issue? I can't hear him.
Yes, sir. Yeah. No, I'm, I'm listening. Let me just ask a question. Is, can, Josh, can y'all hear what Sean is saying?
Yes.
Yes.
Um... Sean? Uh, yes, sir, I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead.
What is going on? Sorry, I tried everything I know to do.
Josh, could you, um, without reading everything, could you state the summary, uh, the staff recommending denial, but you don't have to list the five or six items?
Staff finds that the, this request is not in keeping, is not consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. There's several things established in Chapter Six and Chapter Two dealing directly with infrastructure and preserving rural character. Staff finds that the Comprehensive Plan Amendment is not consistent with the established Comprehensive Plan for the City of Gallatin.
So why do you deny the request? Enlist the reasons that you mentioned. Is that complete enough, this report?
Yes, sir. That would, that would be the- Conditions that are listed in the staff report. Right.
So we have a motion by Dr. Organe to, uh, deny the applicant's request. Did I hear a second by Mrs. Hibbler?
Yes.
We will screen, so I'll turn them down at the end of the meeting, so please don't be afraid to get close to them.
John, I could hear you. It looks like there's been, uh, a motion by Dr. Organe to, uh, uh, deny Sonny Weatherford's, um, request. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. And we, and I believe we had a second by Alana, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we have discussion on that. Um, I understand that item number ten and number eleven are really tethered together here, because ten is whether we're gonna change our Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted by Planning Commission, but not necessarily by council. Um, and obviously, if we vote not to amend our Comprehensive Plan, we should not vote for the rezoning in item number eleven, or we should recommend against the rezoning in item number eleven. So we have a motion on the floor to deny a change to the Comprehensive Plan, which logically would mean a no vote on the item number eleven when we get to it. Um, discussion? And Sean, I'm, I'm, let me just stop up here for a minute. I know Sean is trying to participate, and I'm not quite sure whether, how to proceed there. Again, Ms. Alexander, if I understand correctly, I cannot count Councilman Fennell's vote unless we can get this resolved?
She already told you that.
Yes. Um, Councilmember Fennell, can you hear me?
Sean, can you hear, uh, Ms. Alexander?
No, I can hear you, John, clear and, I mean, I can hear, I think, what's going on, but I can only hear you. Hey, John-
Yeah, let me, let me convey that back to them in the meeting. Um, Sean can only hear me, and he cannot hear anything that y'all are saying there at the meeting. That's, that's the problem. And so Sean is wanting to weigh in on this issue, and he's told me several things that, um, his opinion on the matter, but, uh, I don't think that, Sean, I don't think you can be a part of the meeting unless, maybe you can hop in the car and get up there real quick. You want, you want me to defer this item or table this item until later in the meeting? Do you wanna drive up there?
Yeah. Uh, John, if you can hear me, I mean, it, you know, I made arrangements to not be there like you did, and, uh, I think I was told that Matt Harris also is doing it, trying to do it by phone.
That's correct, Sean, if you can hear me. I'm on the call.
So let me just relay what Sean is saying.
I can, I can hear John.
Sean is saying that, um, Councilman Fennell is saying that he made arrangements to be a part of this meeting. He told earlier the meeting might not take place, and then later that it would take place, but he's not able to log in, and he wants to vote on this issue. He has asked if we, um, table this item to the end of the agenda. I know I've already opened the item, but if we could table it to the end, he will drive up there so that he can participate in person in the meeting. Is that too unorthodox to shelve an item that's already been opened and has a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Um, I heard a yes.
That's just one vote.
I need our Staff Attorney to tell me some direction there.
The motion can be removed from the table, and there could be a motion made to defer this item until the end of the meeting, if this body chooses to do so. That is up to this body.
Okay. So, if I understand, if the motion was made by Dr. Organe and seconded by Alana, so the only way to defer this to a later item in the agenda, I'm telling you, this is Councilman Fennell, is, um, if Mrs. Hibbler withdraws her second and Dr. Organe withdraws his first. If they don't withdraw their motions, then we've, already have a motion on the table, and I have to proceed with a vote. Um, sorry to put you on the spot, Alana, but do you wish to withdraw your second, or do you wish for it to stand?
Stand.
She wishes for it to stand. Then I'll need to call for a vote at this point. Uh, all in favor of the motion to recommend denial of the, uh, or to recommend not changing the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, please indicate by saying aye by roll call vote.
Chair Purrier?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris? Vice Chair Harris?
Aye. My apologies, you were muted.
Mr. Wilson? Uh, Councilman Fennell? Dr. Organe? Uh, Mr. Strather? Uh, Ms. Hibbler?
Aye.
Okay. Um, the motion is approved to deny the applicant's request to change the Comprehensive Plan. Item number eleven is on the same issue. Uh, it's the Weatherford Estates rezoning request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This rezoning request tied directly back to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Staff finds that the rezoning request is inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan. R fifteen is not a permitted zoning district within the rural community character area. Uh, and without changing the character area to the suburban neighborhood emerging character area, we find that the rezoning request is not in compliance with the Gallatin on the Move twenty twenty plan.
All right. Thank you. Do we have, uh, representative for the applicant present or online?
We do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Then I'll open this to a public comment. Um, do we have anybody present or online who is wishing to speak on this issue?
There is no one in the room indicating that they'd like to speak on this issue. We receive no comments via email on this issue.
Okay. Then I will close the public comment. Um, I'll entertain, um, motion, uh, in regards to item number eleven, either a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning, or a motion to, uh, recommend against the rezoning.
I make a motion to recommend, recommend against the rezoning, says Harris.
We, we have a recommendation by Mr. Harris, uh, to recommend against rezoning the property. Do I have a second?
I second it. Mr. Stra-
Was that Mr. Strather?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a second by Albert Strather. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in, uh, favor of recommending against the rezoning of the property, indicate by saying aye. Roll call vote, please.
Chair Purrier?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh.
Dr. Organe?
Uh.
Mr. Strather? Uh, Ms. Hib-
Uh, Ms. Hibler?
Aye.
Okay, um, the motion is approved to recommend against rezoning the property. We'll move on to item number twelve, which is Resolution Number 2020 dash O-5-0, Lennox Place Bluegrass Veterinary Clinic. amended preliminary master development plan and final master development plan. Who's handling this item?
Dustin Shane, Gallatin Planning Department. Uh, this is, as was said, it's a, it's an amended PMDP, uh, for Lennox Place Phase 13 and an FMDP for a portion of that, uh, master development plan. It's on about an acre and a half zone tomorrow. Um, it's located at 390 Devon Chase Hill. Uh, the applicant wants to develop a, uh, one-story, 2,900 square foot veterinary clinic building with a parking lot. Parking lot's gonna have 22 spaces. Uh, it's gonna have, uh, the landscaping, buffer yards, trash receptacle, uh, higher retention pond. Uh, the architecture meets the zoning requirements. Um, the applicant has, uh, work with us to address the comments that we brought up at the work session. Uh, they're gonna use, they worked with stormwater to, um, mitigate the extra parking spaces that they're asking for, uh, that are above it beyond what our code calls for. Um, the only thing we need from them are a pedestrian access easement for the sidewalk and some more trees along 109 and Devon Chase Hill, um, to fill out those buffer yards for our code standards.
All right, thank you. Do we have a representative for the applicant, either present in the room or online? Someone from staff needs to be my eyes there.
Matt Taylor? Matt Taylor? SEC, I've unmuted you.
Mr. Taylor, go ahead. Josh, did I understand you have a Matt Taylor with SEC Incorporated?
Mr. Chairman, this is Bill McCorr, uh, City Planner. Doesn't appear that, uh, Mr. Taylor can hear us or is, currently, he apparently is online, but apparently can't hear us.
Um, I will make a motion that item number twelve be moved to the, um, back end of the agenda so that we can try to work, in the meantime, try to work on getting that connected so that Mr. Taylor is able to speak. If we have a representative for the applicant, we need to make every effort to, um, let him speak or we would have to defer the item.
I'll second the motion.
We have a second by Mr. Harris, any discussion on that? All right, all in favor of, uh, deferring the item to the back end of the agenda, uh, after item number fourteen on tonight's agenda? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye on a roll call vote.
Chair Perrier?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh.
Dr. Organe? Uh, Mr. Strauthner? Uh, Ms. Hibler?
Aye.
Okay, so somebody there has like fifteen minutes to get that fixed. No pressure, um, come back to that one. We'll open up then item number thirteen, which is, um, Resolution Number 2020 dash O-5-5, the paddock at Canisaw Farms, phases one A, two A, three A, and four A. amended preliminary master development plan and final master development plan. Who's handling this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's Josh King, uh, reading notes from Jillian Ogden. The owner and applicant request approval of an amended TMVP for the paddock at Canisaw Farms and a FMVP for the paddock at Canisaw Farms, phases one A, two A, three A, and four A on 28.89 acres located east of Big Station Camp Boulevard, north of National Pike, and south of the CSX Railroad. Single-family detached dwelling units and attached dwelling units are permitted in the MU Zone District and the R-8 Planned Residential Development Zone District. Phase one A, two A, three A, and four A include a total of 130 feet simple units. The paddock at Canisaw Farms is formerly known as Storm Creek at Canisaw Farms. First amendment to the approved TMVP includes the adjustment of fade lines and lot layout due to topographical issues and a minor redistribution of housing sites. The number of overall units will not change with this amendment. This amendment also adds street trees within the right-of-way, which will require the council approval, harmless agreement prior to the installation of those trees. The Planning Commission must determine if the proposed changes should be considered a minor or major amendment. As mentioned, the proposed changes are minimal and the density does not change. Therefore, the planning staff recommends that this item be considered a minor amendment to the approved master plan. A public hearing will also be held on this item. Planning Department recommends approval of Resolution 2020 dash year five five.
Thank you, Josh. Um, do we have a representative for the applicant, either present in the room or online?
We do, Mr. Chairman, he's coming up to the microphone now.
Great.
Cal's entries, Southeastern Building, Cal's entries, Southeastern Building, we agree on staff comments.
Um, at this time, I'll open it up as to a public comment. Do we have anyone in the audience, uh, or online wishing to speak in regards to this item?
Mr. Chairman, we've received no comments about this item and no one in the room is indicating that they'd like to speak on this issue.
At this time, I'll close the public comment and entertain a motion as to whether it's a minor or a major change.
I'll, I'll motion that it's a minor change.
We have a motion by Mr. Harris that it be a minor change, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Organe, I believe?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Um, all in favor of it being considered a minor change, indicate by saying aye by roll call vote.
Chair Perrier?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh.
Dr. Organe?
Uh.
Mr. Strauthner? Uh, Ms. Hibler?
Aye.
Okay, motion approved, it is a minor amendment. Um, now I'll entertain a motion on the floor or questions to staff.
I'll make a motion for approval, including staff's thirteen comments.
So we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Harris, uh, motion for approval, including all thirteen of staff's comments. Do I hear a second?
I'll vote second. Mr. Strauthner, a second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approval of, uh, with all thirteen, um, conditions of approval by staff, indicate by saying aye by roll call vote.
Chair Perrier?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh.
Dr. Organe?
Uh.
Mr. Strauthner? Uh, Ms. Hibler?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, item approved. Um, item number fourteen is Resolution Number 2020 dash O-5-6, Mohawk Fabric Center. It's a site plan. Um, who's handling this item?
That would be me, it's Josh again, Mr. Chairman. The, this is a, uh, industrial project located along Gateway Drive. It's roughly located between RC-10 and American Colors on land currently owned by the City of Gallatin in the industrial park. The applicant is, uh, requesting approval of a site plan, uh, for a building as shown. I'm desperately stalling because I can't find the square footage. For the building as shown and displayed on the screen, for a warehouse and office use with associated parking and site improvements. The applicant meets all the conditions of the zoning ordinance with the exception of the architecture. The, the applicant will need an alternative architecture approved by the Planning Commission. They're using, uh, painted concrete tilt-up panels, uh, and storefront windows. This does not meet the 70% brick or stone on the office component. The architecture is of a high quality and is similar to other projects that have been approved in the industrial park recently by the Board. Staff finds that the alternative architecture is, uh, meets the intent of the Gallatin zoning ordinance. And, uh, the, of alternative architecture meets the intent of the Gallatin zoning ordinance and, uh, staff recommends approval of this item.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a representative for the applicant, either present in the audience or online?
We do have James Overton, the, with EDA, on the phone. James? Rosemary?
James Fenton or James Overton?
I'm sorry, James Fenton.
Okay.
Uh, Rosemary has joined us in the room.
Sure, this is Judge Mary Bates and I will represent the applicant and I have nothing to add except to, um, encourage you to approve this with staff comments.
Okay, um, thank you, Rosemary. I think I'll, at this time, we'll entertain either a motion or questions from the commission for the staff members or the applicant, well, for the staff.
Hey, this is, this is Harris. Question, uh, Josh, the way the resolution is written, does it include the alternate architecture, would that need to be added as part of the motion?
It would be safer if you added that as part of the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the plans, uh, reflect the, off this building, of course, the plans do reflect the alternative architecture.
Okay, well, then I'll make a motion that we approve item number fourteen with, including staff's nine comments and specifically the alternative architecture.
Second. That's a second by Ms. Hibler.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Harris and seconded by Mrs. Hibler, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote by roll call vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye, please take the roll call.
Chair Perrier?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh.
Dr. Organe?
Uh.
Mr. Strauthner?
Uh.
Ms. Hibler?
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. Item number fourteen approved. Um, we'll go back to item number twelve, which was, um, the Resolution Number 2020 dash O-5-0, Lennox Place Bluegrass Veterinary Clinic. Have we been able to, um, connect with the applicant's representative?
Matt Taylor, are you with us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Matt, we can hear you.
All right, great, yes, so I'm here and, uh, we're in, um, agreement with staff comments. I think there's, uh, adding some trees and then dedicating a public access easement and, um, we're perfectly fine with all that.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Taylor. At this time, I'll open a public comment. Is there anyone in the room or anyone online who would like to speak in regards to this item?
Mr. Chairman, we have not received any email comments and no one in the room is indicating that they would like to come forward to speak on this item.
Okay, at this time, I'll close the public comment and we'll open it up for questions or, uh, or a motion. I'll have one question. Mr. Taylor, um, there was some issue about the, uh, the flood plain. Have you worked that out with staff as far as, uh, encroachment into the flood plain?
Yes, sir, uh, we are going to submit a letter of map correction. Uh, if you look at the flood elevations versus where the flood plain is coming up in there and compare that to the existing ground elevations, uh, there's quite a significant, uh, difference there. Basically, it's showing the flood plain being four to five feet higher or up into land that is four to five feet higher than the actual elevation itself. And so we're gonna submit a letter of map change to, um, FEMA to show them that they're using old data, basically, and that they, they should correct that to what, to match what's in the field.
Okay, and just a question for staff. Um, is staff comfortable with that response from the applicant?
Chair, this is Bill McCorr, City Planner. Uh, that is one option, that they can pursue the letter of map amendment to, for map change to correct that, or they could, uh, do a no rise, uh, study to indicate that the field that they're proposing to put in the northwest corner will not adversely affect the, uh, application properties around the stream. So they have those two options and either one is acceptable.
Very good. Any other questions for the applicant or for staff? Well, seeing none, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve with staff's, um, recommend, or staff's comments.
Do I have a second?
And who was the second by?
Uh, do you want Matt to have it or do you want? The second was by Matt Harris.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? Call for the vote, please indicate by saying aye, um, in, in a roll call vote.
Chair Perrier?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh.
Dr. Organe?
Uh.
Mr. Strauthner?
Uh.
Ms. Hibler?
Aye.
Um, we have an approval, item number twelve is approved. With that, we would get to the other business section, but I believe we've had some discussion about, um, postponing the other business items, um, to a future date. Uh, staff, can you comment on that? Or did I misunderstand?
Other business items, A, B, and C. Uh, we're prepared to present a brief presentation requesting guidance from the Planning Commission on a building permit that has been submitted to our office. And this is similar to one that we had, uh, requested information on, on the same property, but a little bit different, building permit application that was presented, uh, to the Planning Commission a couple of months ago.
Okay, my question is, I may have misunderstood in our review on Friday. Are we going to address these other business items tonight or, um, due to the challenges we face with the teleconferencing, is that going to be deferred for a later date?
That's, that's up to the board to make that decision whether they want to defer this action. But you don't know.
Well, I, I will say this, on item number A, um, we talked about this at work study, an advisory opinion, it's not a voting item. None of these items under other business are a voting item. And, um, I can't call for a vote. All we could give you is a, a nod or a discussion to kinda give you an indicator of what they felt, but being that we're doing this remotely, I feel like the only way that people who are online could give you an indication is to, well, to take a vote.
And Chair Perrier, this is myself, Alexander, staff attorney. Now, I need to tell on the record that this body is not, does not have any statutory, state or local authority to give an advisory opinion on this matter at this time. Um, this body can only give advisory opinions when it's regarding to a matter that's before the Board of Design appeals and this matter is not at this time before that. the Board of Zoning Appeals and this matter is not at this time before that Board. The authority to issue or not issue this permit is in the hands of the zoning administrator. So, whether you are beside to discuss this or not, you are not in a position to get any opinion one way or the other that will have any merit as far as whether this permit is issued or not.
I mean, Chairman, we do have some public in the audience who is interested in this issue, so that's up to the planning commission as to whether they want to continue the discussion. Again, I'm looking for guidance on this issue. It's gone back and forth a couple of times. I have some photographs of accessory structures and other buildings that were constructed in the same neighborhood and in the same zoning district throughout the city. There's quite a few actually that have been constructed over the years. And so, I'm looking for guidance because apparently earlier I had asked the planning commission for some guidance on this and made a motion and moved forward a motion that was eventually an advisory opinion that was provided to the Board of Zoning Appeals on the previous case. And this one is quite similar. It's a little bit different, but it's quite similar. And before we head down this road again, I would like to get at least the discussion so that I may, maybe there's something I'm missing here that would be advice that I could get from the planning commission in rendering my decision on the building permit.
Well, I understand. Well, please, please proceed with your presentation, 15A, Advisory Opinion on Building Permit Compatibility for Proposed Accessory Structure at 817 Longboat Drive.
Josh, if you don't mind, if I can see the slide, let me get it. Okay, hopefully you can see the screen. Each other, you can see the screen. So, what we have now is, we received a building permit to construct an accessory structure at 817 Longboat Drive and the accessory structure is roughly high 1,500 square feet in size. It would be side yard, but outside of the setback areas required by code. Again, there's a part of the building permit application that was submitted and referencing the homeowner acting as a contractor. The applicant proposes to construct a building metal carport from the Spender Max Steel Buildings. This slide shows a footprint of the building. Again, it's predicted to be 5,900 square feet. It would have metal roof and open sides with supports. This is a rendering of the structural side of the building. You can see from this diagram which portion would be sheet metal side. Another, I do, details from the sheet, I think each of you have those on the screen, probably easier to read than the one presenting here. And these are just detailed construction drawings that are submitted with the building permit. This is the applicant's property that I'm showing on the screen now as a survey of their lot and generally where their house is located in the proposed location of the accessory structure, which would be five feet off of the sideline line, which coincides with the code. This is part of the Bay Point subdivision. It's actually six, six of the Bay Point subdivision that has multiple sections throughout the area and there on the south side of Longboat Drive. This is the area of photograph, the applicant's property, generally east is to the top of the screen and south is to the right of the screen. This is a photograph that showed the previous accessory structure that was located on the property and you're not going to be able to see the identifying the location of that , those of you who are, there you go, I believe you might be able to see that cursor. And so, there was an accessory structure on that property not too long ago. This is a rendering or actually a photograph of the structure that they propose. It's a cardboard structure that they propose on that, that portion of the property behind the house. This would be a typical what that structure was designed, it was not, went under construction. This is a map that shows the, one area of town it's owned, R20, the applicant's property is owned R20, and this shows you an outline of properties that have accessory structures. And I'm going to show you a number of those. There are three predominant areas of town that are owned R20 and generally either have accessory structures or could have accessory structures and either one of these areas is not aware of except for maybe one portion of it had an active homeowner association. This is the Lakeview Hunters subdivision area of block four road and Nichols Lane. And you can see the lots that have accessory structures, at least at the time this photograph was taken, are highlighted in red outline. Some of the lots that are shown here are not in a flat subdivision and they're much larger than the minimum lot size or general lot size of R20, but there are significant number even here that have accessory structures on them. This is a photograph, area photograph of the Bay Point subdivision, which shows you the location of the properties that have accessory structures. And I have a lot of series of photographs where those are. And this is one of those homes in Bay Point subdivision. This shows an accessory structure behind the house and this is one of two accessory structures behind this house, which is over 2,000 square feet, so. And then we have another one across the street there, garage building, probably about 600 square feet. Another pool house on this property, probably about 500 square feet. This shows a house with a three-car garage, metal building with metal roof detached from the house behind the property on Bay Point Drive, probably neighborhood of 800 to 1,000 square feet. Another accessory structure, brick attached to the house there in that location. This is a sizable structure here and I'm not real sure exactly if this is just a lodge or if it's an accessory living unit, but it is quite sizable, probably in the neighborhood of 1,500 square feet on this property, just around the corner on Bay Point. This is the other side of the house that I first showed, which showed the other part of the second accessory structure, so there's a similar one just like this on the, what I call the east side of the house and behind that house. This is another house in Bay Point, going to have a three-story, which has a fairly large accessory structures off of that. This is, I'm not sure who, who owns this, this is a large structure, probably 2,000 or square feet in Bay Point subdivision two, and it appears to be more of a barn than a residence, so it's not a residential use. This is a smaller structure, the brick house here, and then we have a wood siding type structure behind the house, a lot of those. In this case, we have a brick house, which is just opposite of the front of the photograph. Here we have two accessory metal buildings on this property and then another one on the property behind it. This is in the, our 20 zoning district, this is about the Bay Point subdivision, Bellaire subdivision, but this is the metal building, two-car garage, probably about 800 square feet. That one doesn't show very well, but probably, that one I believe is in Bay Point, but hard to see this one, but there is accessory structure right there. It's a little bit different architecture than the house. This is in Bellaire subdivision, painted same, has, has the house, but it's a wooden side and not brick. Here's one that I believe is mostly brick in Bellaire subdivision. Other structure, accessory structure behind there. Here's one that's painted to look like the house, but it's accessory, probably about, probably about 20 by 28 there. Here's one also Bellaire subdivision, pan metal building, big car, high roof garage. Here's one behind the house, a brick house, and that's detached, it's pretty sizable and actually the roofline is higher than it is the house. This one didn't show really well, but there is accessory structure on that tree. This one is on the Nichols Lane in our 40 zoning district, which is an acre lot zoning district, but you have two accessory structures and this accessory structure back here is probably about 5,000 square feet. It's very large. And that would be all the photographs I have at this time. What I'm trying to point out is there are a number of accessory structures in our 20 zoning districts, some are quite sized, they're quite sizable and comparable in size almost to the house in many cases, and they include a lot of different architectures than simply massive architecture of the house or in the neighborhood. So, again, the biggest one, this is at the Bay Point, the biggest one, actually is two structures that are probably over 2,000 square feet. So, what we're asking for, because the standards in our zoning code are considered perhaps subjective, although we had heard represented a request to ask the board to support a staff position pertaining to accessory structures and/or total lot construction, lot coverage. And that was, that was upheld by the planning commission in their advisory opinion and then essentially reversed at the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, because of that reversal, we have a similar circumstance here, a little bit smaller building, a little bit different design, and we, I would like for at least there be some discussion as to what may come to compatibility because what's going to happen likely is we determine and we issue a permit for this different structure that we may have an appeal again. And we'll be right back to the point, place where we were earlier this year. So, I'd be glad to hear some, some comment from board members. Is appropriate for the? That would be up to the chair to offer that. Mr. Chairman, we have a member of the public and their attorney representing them in the room and they have requested to speak.
I'll entertain a motion to open a public comment. It's, okay, we have a motion by Dr. Organe to allow public, allow public, allow the public to speak. It's not a public hearing, but it's allow the public to speak. Do we have a second on that?
Dr.? Mr. Strauffer, a second?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead and take a vote on that motion to allow them to speak.
Well, I, for, for, we're going to have some discussion quickly on it. I, I don't have a problem with the public speaking, although I, I'm not sure that this is an item, based on attorney's comments, that we should be offering an advisory opinion on at all, so I'll just put that on the record, but if you guys want to take a vote on, on opening the public comments or let them speak, that's, that's fine.
You don't have to render any opinion on this or any guidance to me, I'm asking you to?
The only reason I'm opening this up is somebody braved it, somebody came all the way up there to speak, I want to allow them a chance to speak, but I want to make it clear that we're not going to vote on this item, we're not going to, we're just listening. And I'm a little uncomfortable with this.
I am too.
Chair Perrier? Well, you're having, you're having a vote on a motion to allow the public to speak.
Yeah, we got that.
A motion to suspend the rules to allow the public to speak in the second.
And, but wait, before I do that, before we take this, before we vote on that, I want to ask, does, right now, does the public out there who may be listening have the opportunity to call in and speak? Because I think I messed up at the beginning of the meeting. I was supposed to make an announcement, and I want to correct that right now. The public teleconference telephone call-in number is 615-527-7228 for public comments, and I believe I failed to mention that at the very beginning of the meeting.
I have unmuted members that are signed in to the, to this webinar that are not present in the room. If any of you would like to speak on this item as members of the public, please indicate, please indicate by announcing yourself.
Someone needs to vote for us?
Yes, I'm skipping ahead. So, by roll call, Chair Perrier?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh.
Dr. Organe?
Aye.
Ms. Strauffer?
Aye.
Okay, so we've opened the public comment and I'm hoping that, let me repeat again, that if there's anyone else out there who wants to speak, the public call-in number is 615-527-7228. Do I, Josh, do I need to also mention this PIN number?
Uh, the PIN number is critically important to join the meeting.
Okay, let me repeat that again. The telephone call, the public teleconference telephone call-in number is 615-527-7228 and the PIN number to join the meeting is 830-0819 for public comments. You need to join via Chrome or Firefox. One, one more time, I feel like a public service announcement, 615-527-7228, PIN is And I'll just explain, the reason I'm doing that is because I believe there are some people who are, well, there's some people reaching out right now who want to speak and are not aware of that, so I want to make sure that they have adequate time and opportunity to speak if we're going to open public comments. So, we have somebody present there, they can go ahead and speak.
Public, I'm Michael.
Please announce your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, my name is George Dean. I'm an attorney from Nashville at Special Life and Landes Planning Law. I'm here to make a very brief presentation and I apologize actually about the systems that the planning commission here uses, but here mainly in front of Metro Board of Zoning District and Metro Board of Planning Commission. Just want to emphasize that this matter came to the commission several months ago. My partner, Kevin Woodall, at that time had higher and bigger garage that he was proposing. He's cut down the size of the building significantly by over 300 square feet. And also, the previous request was to have a height of 150, this time it's at 14 feet. He already, for the last five years, he had basically a similar apartment, out on the property. He's taken it down, replaced it. That's, that's why he's made the application for permit. What I don't understand, I may not come to the planning commission, but it's come and I find it, it come in this presentation. I wanted to take one other kind of amendment to put the plan, like you said, my understanding is that the building, once constructed, if it can be constructed, will be enclosed on three sides. That is, it won't be a typical cardboard, which would be open on all sides, but with the open in the front or access, it would be closed on three sides. But again, what's, what's Uh, but again, it's much smaller than the original application, uh, plus a site than the original application. Uh, we believe that it's compatible, assuming compatibility is necessary, I know there's a provision in the zoning ordinance about that, but it suggests the planning commission has some statutory authority to the contrary, and I'm not sure, but that's important here, which is really important. We've done that today, and the planning director demonstrated there are a number of properties which have these kinds of buildings already, and they're typically accessory to virtually, well, many different potential uses across, not only south, but also all, perhaps the entire country. Anyway, I understand you may not vote on it, and that's fine. Uh, I might also, and I apologize, I had, I had numbers, a question about the, the planning commission's advisory opinions, and I may be misreceiving, maybe from the Metro Charter, allow the planning commission to hold advisory opinion, but my regulation is that the statute, the state statutes that govern your proceedings always allow you to give advisory opinions on a request of a municipal official anytime. That's the purpose behind the planning commission anyway, is to give those kinds of advisory opinions, because you all have a plan and the data to make a, thank you very much, appreciate it.
On the phone, we have David Doyle, would you like to speak on this item?
This is Zoe Doyle, I am present, I would like to speak.
Okay, uh, can you turn down your speaker, Ms. Doyle? We're getting a little bit of an echo.
Yeah, I'm fine, I had difficulty getting in to the call, and now I'm not really sure what the problem is.
We can hear you now.
Okay, um, what I would like to say is that first and foremost, I would respectfully disagree with Mr. Dean's position that this body has authority to take a vote on this particular issue. The authority that the planning commission has over land use control is only that which is granted to it by the state of Tennessee, um, and the state of Tennessee has only, has given it authority only over the general plan, that's the land use plan, and in our case, that's Gallison on the Move 2020. So, your authority to render opinions is only related to the general plan, and the opinion that you've been asked to render in this case is an opinion on a zoning issue. And so, this body does not have the authority to render an opinion on a zoning issue, because it has only that authority which is given to it by law. Uh, so I would say that first and foremost, if you are going to take the step of rendering an opinion on compatibility, I did not have the opportunity to see any of the photographs that Mr. McCord showed you of buildings, accessory structures in other areas of town or in other areas of Bay Point. I could only hear a little bit about what he said on that issue. I will say this, um, the compatibility standards that you are looking at under Article thirteen direct that the, um, the structure has to be compatible with adjacent buildings. Adjacent buildings are the buildings next door, the abutters buildings, the buildings near, directly nearby. None of those buildings, um, would be compatible with a fifty by thirty metal, fourteen foot tall plus, uh, three-sided RV cover. Um, my house will have a fifty-foot wall of metal to look at from my kitchen window. Uh, that is in no way compatible with any of the houses in our particular area here in Bay Point. Every abutter is a primarily brick house, uh, none of the abutters have metal structures in their backyards, particularly no metal RV covers, and the structures that Mr. McCord showed you in other areas of Bay Point are not even on Longboat Drive. The biggest one that I believe that he's referring to, although I wouldn't know because I couldn't see the photograph, uh, is a racquetball court that was built by the original developer of this subdivision, uh, long before Bay Point was ever here, and it's on a lot that is between two and three acres. The lot that the Woodalls are proposing to put a fifteen hundred foot metal RV cover is point six one acres. So, that's a, that's a, um, apples and oranges comparison. And furthermore, the other areas that he showed you accessory structures for throughout the city have no application whatsoever to our, the adjacent buildings to the Woodall's home, and they shouldn't be considered. And finally, I would say that your authority is limited to the, the general plan and the development of the city as planning commissioners, and the document that this body adopted itself, the Gallison Planning, um, on the move 2020, addresses our very neighborhood. Uh, it addresses suburban neighborhoods and refers to the fact that some of them are stable, um, existing neighborhoods, and that the city's plan should be to protect neighborhoods that, um, no longer have or do not have design-specific covenants and restrictions. And there are several neighborhoods listed, Halewood's listed, areas off of Cages Bend are listed, Brown's Lane is listed, and specifically Bay Point is listed, um, and so I'd ask you to consider that as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Doyle.
Yeah, thank you.
Josh, is there anyone else who's indicating they would like to speak on the subject?
Uh, no one else in the room has indicated they'd like to speak, and there's no one else online, uh, popping up as not a member of either in the room or city staff. If you're a member of city staff and like to, or if you'd like to discuss this as a member of the public, please let me know.
Josh, this is Rosemary Bates, um, and I would like to make a comment, if that's acceptable as a public, member of the public.
Yes, go ahead, Rose.
Um, I am in my office, and it is very challenging to have understood the attorney who spoke and even Ms. Doyle, because there was a lot of feedback during what she was saying, and it was difficult to hear the attorney, because there may be some people as part of this conversation who are rattling papers or not muting their phone, and, um, as someone who is trying to watch from home, it was very challenging to follow, um, and I agree with Ms. Doyle that the pictures don't necessarily represent the situation that is specific to the issue that the attorney is representing, um, and I would just suggest as a member of the public that this decision or opinion or whatever you think you may or may not be able to do could affect every neighborhood in the city, and I don't think this was handled well enough and clearly enough to even approach the idea of making an opinion, and I would just suggest and hope that you would quit discussing this tonight and table it for another time to figure out a better way to address this, perhaps when we're not in this situation.
Thank you, Rosemary. Um, I'll have to say, I want to applaud the efforts of the IT department to put together this, um, remote technology on such short notice and, and try to put together a, you know, a meeting in spite of the situation we're in. I'll also say that if the US House and Senate have to finalize negotiations on a three-trillion-dollar bill, um, remotely, God help us. So, um, I, I'm, I'm gonna take this item off the other business and move on to item B, uh, discussion of the Nashville Pike corridor plan and Nashville Pike access management plan, unless the, uh, staff attorney tells me I don't have the authority to do that.
The staff attorney has indicated you can move forward.
Okay, we're moving to item B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item fifteen B is a discussion on the Nashville Pike corridor plan and Nashville Pike access management plan, and Bill is gonna take it from here.
Regarding the city plan, we've been asked by, we've been asked by, uh, a couple, at least one property owner in this quarter.
Hey, Bill, sorry to, sorry to interrupt, this is Mr. Harris. I, I can't, I can't hear, there's a lot of background noise in the conference call. Uh, Josh, is it possible you, we've unmuted some, some folks that we could, we can silence so we can hear better?
I'm working on that right now.
Okay.
It also would be helpful for those of you not talking, if you could mute your mics until you speak. There you go. Okay, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? Mr. Harris, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now, thank you.
Yes, yes, I had it on mute, sorry.
And you can see the screen, is that correct?
Correct, yes, yes.
Okay, we've been asked by at least one property owner to, and I, I think Councilman Fidel, hello, planning commissioner, and had requested this as well, to consider some changes to the Nashville Pike corridor plan, which was a overlay district that was adopted as part of the general development master plan incorporated into the Gallison on the Move plan. Uh, this was identified originally back in two thousand, I believe in two thousand, two thousand and one when it was actually approved, so it is incorporated to the, uh, current comp plan. Now, what it did is establish some specific design standards that would be applied to sections of Highway thirty-one E, Nashville Pike, from Stacy Camp or east of Stacy Camp Creek, eastward link to Highway one oh nine and a change. And what it did is bifurcated that area roughly east of where the Verizon store, there's a private road there, Belvedere Drive, eastward to more intensive commercial uses, like planned neighborhood, commercial, and in some cases, uh, CG zoning, commercial general, and then west of there with less intensive uses, limited to office activities, and so some of the MRO, multiple family residential office. So, at the time of that, it was incorporated into the Gallison on the Move plan, and there was a little bit different development along the corner, and then some of the houses had been removed. So, the map that you see there now is the whole area that's included in this overlay, and the roughly, the, right, right at the center is the area where the land, the activities, the zoning changes. So, what we have is mostly still homes that have been converted into offices, a few homes still left there, west of Belvedere Drive. What I've done is highlighted for you parts of the, uh, plan that are pertinent to the property where the property owner would like for some changes to occur, and that's between Peninsula Drive and East Camp Creek. So, there's a description that I highlighted there of what the intent for that area is, including MRO zoning, and, and that will allow for professional offices, which has been, the use has been approved in, approved in over the years on that property. There's also an access management plan that covers the, uh, those properties and requires the interconnected driveways and parking lots. Uh, we've been able to modify on that access management plan, would still need the intent of that on the north side of the road by having the access road being constructed on the adjacent properties, being developed as part of Baker's Crossing, there's a couple hotels, and part of the Preston Park property. So, each of those properties that are along Nashville Pike, on the north side of Nashville Pike, will eventually have the ability to tie into that roadway and maybe abandon their interconnected driveways. So, this plan was adopted and it put, as you see down there, MRO or OR, office residential, there's no office residential zoning in the quarter, but that's certainly in a, some of the classifications. So, MRO is what you've gotten, and you've got a variety of offices and minor, I think, I think it was a dress shop or something in there one time, I'm not sure if it's still there, but you do have professional offices, they retain the structures as is described in this report, and they also retain most of the landscaping, and most of them have access, and I know will have access from interconnected driveways. So, there are architectural standards that I mentioned there, and again, they want it to look like a home, they want to have this gateway of appeal as you approach the city from, uh, uh, each corner of Stacy Camp Creek. So, I just wanted to highlight those, I didn't get you the whole plan, we can certainly provide that to you, since I took an email, but it would be easier for you to look at the, the focus on this more important aspects of this property. So, it includes general architectural and policy and standards that are to be applied there, and over the years it has. Now, what's happened is that, um, and my speech is being buffered, what's happened is that a couple of the houses have been removed over the years, and I think I have a couple of older photographs. Uh, there's the back road, Baggage Road, it should just highlight in yellow, I mean, orange, that shows how, when parallel, what was originally proposed, the interconnected service drive, but, um, let's get to... Do you have a recommendation on this? Not at this point, I'm just wanting to bring it to your attention for, yeah, there we go, okay, there we are, I didn't know where that went. So, if this photograph was taken in two thousand and ten, and Baker's Crossing property was getting cleared, and all this was, at the time, was not zoned this way when the overlay was created, so you had a few of the homes removed here, and there's a new street that's been put in here, and what happened, uh, is that, and this would have looked like when those homes were there, there was only a couple of offices at that time, and in September, between Janu- January and September, this when several of those homes were removed in anticipation of development, oop, that's wrong, like, development of the Butler, uh, Mount Butler, Baker's Crossing, and now Tulip Poplar has been extended to the Poplar Drive, has been extended back there here, and on the corner here was the London Vision Center building that was constructed, oh, about three, four years ago. So, and obviously with the house gone, what they went in there and they cleared a lot of vegetation to put that big building into the parking lot, so it was a little bit different in scope than what you got in, say, the Verizon office, and then you have a, a larger house here that has parking around it. So, their concern is that, I guess, the Nashville Pike corridor plan has served its purpose, and now you need to maybe consider changing, um, this overlay and opening it up to more lucrative zoning, I suppose, or liberalized zoning. I don't have an opinion on this, but, uh, as described in the summary, there is a purpose for why this plan was done, so, um, and that summary, that promise still holds today. So, if you do want to consider changes, it would, you don't necessarily have to do it to both sides of the road, you could do it to one side of the road, but, uh, that one might lead a lot different development pattern, obviously, occurring along that corner, and we're probably getting a lot of requests for more intensive commercial activity. It's just open for discussion.
I have a comment being the senior guy here. My, my first, my first meeting of the planning commission was a long-range plan by the city. I don't remember how many public forums we had, public hearings around the city, probably ten or twelve anyway, it was before Walmart was built, and the universal tunnel across the city was, was that everybody in the city wanted that entrance to the city to remain pure, um, pastoral. So, here we are two years later, and, and we have lunged that to death. so here we are two years later, and, and we have lunched that to death with what Bill was saying was, um, you know, we're moving a house here, we're moving a house there, and so that, that thought process is long gone moving forward, and if there's a better higher use, um, I think we should look at it. I think look at it, Rosemary.
Okay, so I think the, was there anybody else on the commission who would like to, um, comment or ask questions about this item, about this issue?
Uh, Chair Perrier, it's Mr. Harris, I, I've said before at other meetings, but just for the record again, I, I've got, recuse myself from any discussions on this matter, I, I have a potential conflict with one of the properties, so I won't be participating.
Okay, let the, well, it's not an item, so it's, you, actually, don't have to recuse yourself, but, but note Mr. Harris's comments there, um, I think the point of this being under other business was just, um, to introduce it to us, and, uh, perhaps at some point in the future it will be brought back as an item on the regular agenda. So, with that being said, if there's no other questions or, or comments on that, we'll move to, um, Item C under other business, which is zoning code amendments, uh, home for the age.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have, we have not, uh, been able to put anything together based on the discussion we had at work session, uh, on this agenda item.
Very good. Then, do we have any announcements?
Thank you, everyone, for participating today, for those of you that logged in from home, um, our apologies for some of the technical difficulties we've been working through, uh, some of these issues for most of the day with Jack Hanchel with the mayor's, mayor's office, our IT staff and planning staff, we are doing the best that we can, uh, under the circumstances that we are under, we thank you for your continued patience.
And I do want to, I, I want to reiterate, I want to thank the, the Jeff, the IT department for pulling this together under the circumstances, this is our first time to try this, so it's, um, it's, it's a challenge, but they sure did do a great job of getting us this far that quick. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, so moved, so moved by Mr. Harris, do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Hibbler, um, okay, I have to have a, I have to have a roll call vote to adjourn, please call a roll and say goodbye.
Chair Perrier?
Uh, aye, goodbye.
Vice Chair Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh.
Dr. Organe?
Here.
Mrs. Straffler?
Here.
Ms. Hibbler?
Motion approved, I hope you all stay safe, Godspeed.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, bye.